Washington. And last but not least.
Rob Seig.
I know your name. Got an old list.
Here.
Hey, everybody's here. First item on the agenda is audience participation. You have a five minute, fifteen, five minute time limit. If you're having to decide one up to the gate and state your name.
Thanks. Sharon Dial, walked around the square with Cody a week ago discussing with him the relative health of each tree. Wanted to give a quick overview and some thoughts. Starting with the southeast corner, several people have contacted me recently about rows of small holes in our star cedar tree. Hearing they were caused by insects. These rows of holes are actually caused by a sap sucker woodpeckers which feed on tree sap. In and of themselves, they cause no damage to trees. Their holes can be told from insect holes by even within the, the field guide. It shows pictures of their holes. These are pretty dense, so they look kind of random, but they're in holes. George, when this gets to you, please pass out to the audience so that they can also see. Okay, on the southwest corner, the shingle oak that's closest to First Federal has dangerous rot up the north side of its trunk. A large limb opposite this rot is basically just waiting for a combo of weight, wind to rip it off. Leaving an unsustainably damaged tree. It needs to be removed. The shingle oak by the monument requires pruning. There are numerous dead limbs and water spouts. That is branches that are growing vertically or nearly so. Water spouts generally arise when there's too much has been removed during pruning or other health issues. The limb overhanging the monument should be cut back to a major side limb along with removal of the water spouts. There's a major limb overhanging the sidewalk that is mostly dead except for numerous water spouts and is beginning to impede passage on the sidewalk. This limb should be removed. An additional shingle oak at the corner of First Federal's driveway just needs to have numerous dead stubs. Removed along with the dead limb. When stubs are left during, during pruning, they invite in, um. Entry of disease and insects and eventually rot. Proper pruning does not leave stubs, but also does not flush cut. The ring of raised bark around a branch is called the branch collar, which is specialized tissue a tree use, uses to seal over wounds. Pruning cuts should be just beyond the branch collar. Branch collar in a drawing, which is not so great, other than it has a nice line on it. Branch collar in reality, as it says here, some are easier to see than others. Okay, um, the Norway spruce was limbed up too far during the fire and explosion that destroyed the buil- building it was near. While the canopy root ratio isn't good and the drought hasn't helped, hopefully it will recover. On the northwest corner. The black maple closest to St. Louis Street is not structurally sound. The limb aimed toward road is not well attached and there's even a honeysuckle shrub growing within the branch union. At some point, this branch will rip off due to a combination of weight, bad branching angle. That caused root bark inclusion, increasing rot and or some inopportune wind or ice storm. It's too large to remove and leave a healthy tree, so this tree should also be removed. There's a picture showing where you can see that there's just bark literally included within the inside of the tree. Because the angle isn't good. So this is inside and outside. And here's a picture. These, this is from Arborist websites of what happened to a branch after an ice storm that had included bark. Okay, the tool poplar nearby is reaching the end of its life and dropping limbs. By the time all the questionable limbs are removed, there'll be too little foliage left to support the roots and the tree will be top heavy. Poplars have very weak wood and thus the safest course is removal, especially since it's near a building. The sugar maple nearest Madison has some dead and dying limbs that should be removed, but otherwise this is a healthy tree. Unfortunately, it appears a combination of soil compaction, drought, and likely herbicide damage have killed the cedar on that corner. There's very little life left and only at the very tuffy top. Uh, very unfortunately that this tree needs to come down. A replacement tree of appropriate species said. Such that when its canopy is full grown, it won't cause issues with the water ta- water towers should be planted at this corner. Taking into account that this corner is used for various events that cause soil compaction. The northeast corner, the sweet gum, AKA gumball tree, was limbed too far up. But this species is better suited for forests than urban areas because its seed balls cause stormwater drain blackages. And mowing issues, especially at this point, removal and replacement with a different species is probably the best course of action. The red oak on this corner is in good shape and needs no action. Though in coordination with Cody, I removed the purple winter creeper that was starting to grow up it. The cedar on that corner is also doing fine and has, also has some evidence of sap sucker feeding. Any questions?
Thank you, Sharon.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Anybody else from the audience? Moving on to older person comments, any, older person I think you want to say, is Washington.
Um, yes, we had, uh, I asked, yes, a couple of weeks ago. About the drainage behind D Street in the Allen. You can get any information on him.
Was that with that gentleman with the church where it was higher? Tony, you did. You did talk to that gentleman, the guy with the church and everything and whatever did talk with that.
Um, it is unfortunate the situation that the Greater Mount Alabama Baptist Church is facing. It is unfortunate, but we did not build their building below grave. So there was little to any that we could help with. Um, I do highly recommend and he understood. The engineers also talked with him too. He talked to another engineer. Uh, when you buy your property, make sure or build on your property, make sure that you build it high enough so that you're not getting water. We did discuss a couple of things and I've heard back from them, but so far it's always very, very good as they go.
Okay. Okay, um. Last Tuesday night. The police were called to my residence. Because, uh, at eight o'clock. Somebody tried to bust in my door. Um, I have no idea who it was. We think it was teammates. I was propositioned by more than one person. To get a gun and to be given a gun. Which I turned down because I have grandkids that come up with it. But I have something even better. So, um, parents need to pay closer attention to their kids. Because this isn't the first time it's happened. The police said this happened more than once. So you need to pay attention to your kids because somebody's gonna get hurt. Somebody does have a gun. And. It's not gonna be no poor Johnny, because poor Johnny had no business there. So I just hope and pray that nobody gets hurt with these little incidents that these kids are causing. And last night, we had a disturbance on Third Street. And the police were called and, um. Yeah, the violator was spitting on people. And I don't know if the police arrested that individual. The chief can talk about that later. I don't know if the violator was arrested, but I know EMS was called and they were taken away. But, um, that needs to be addressed. That's, I mean, you call the police. They're not psychologists, so we don't want to hear a bunch of talk. We want them to take action. So, um. That's about it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, uh, it was brought to my attention by my eight and six year old. Um, they were on a walk with their mother, um. Downtown here and in this, that small park there where, um. All the flowers and things were like that in a little gazebo. Um, they had noticed a lot of beer cans and cigarette butts. And they were pretty upset about the fact, and then they asked if I would please, uh, say something about that. So I don't know if. My wife said that it looks like somebody's hanging out there and drinking and smoking and leaving all their stuff there. So I don't know. Maybe that's. We could pop by there, see kind of what's going on in the evening time or on weekends or whatever it is. And then I don't know whose. Responsibility that is, I mean, clean all that stuff up or whatever, but, uh, if we can get that stuff.
The park is a city responsibility that the guardian, city garden, lemon and garden club maintains the plants and the shrubs. And all of that.
Yeah.
But they're not responsible.
Sure.
So I guess that would be streets or streets and alleys would probably be responsible. The thing that they're. Okay, you got that, Cody? All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
Uh, my neighbors. Want to know if that was, if, if that's a sinkhole on the McAllister.
Yes, from what I've read, it's a sinkhole.
Okay.
It's not a geologic sinkhole. That requires limestone and there's no limestone damage.
Oh, it is. They were asking and I didn't, I had no idea.
Thank you. I think it's still kind of like, I think they're, everybody's still trying to figure out what's causing that issue, uh, whether it's.
So it's, there's not a possibility to get bigger.
There is possibility.
They could be mines, so we don't know.
Uh, they had somebody come out and verify that it wasn't.
So there's no mine down there? Okay, okay.
Anything else? Everybody else? Okay, we will move on. And the agenda, TWM is here tonight. I forget your names. But TWM is here tonight to discuss the application for the Safe Grounds Schools Grant that we requested. Or we're requesting, uh, funding to do a curb and gutter along Union Street. We've, we've gotten, we've requested one for other areas around this elementary school. Now we're looking at Union Street since we're going to be doing work on that, that school.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you, everyone. So I think it's already been kind of talked about a little bit. Uh, Lena Nguyen is here with me. I am Jeff Rice with TWM. Um, so yeah, we have, uh, Hornet Street is one currently designed. We got Safe Grounds to School money for, um, a couple of blocks on that over by the school. And, um, so that's kind of already in design. Will be built here. Um, that's planned for twenty twenty seven. Um, this is probably, um, a year or two behind that. So probably in twenty twenty eight, potentially this could get built. Uh, I'll kind of turn it over to Lena. She'll kind of go over the whole plan and kind of what this is all going to kind of tie into. This is kind of also build up. Uh, the Friends of McAllister plan from several years ago. So this is kind of ties into all that. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Lena.
Yeah, and I also apologize for people in the back that this isn't the greatest exhibit, so I'll try to point everything out for you all. Um, but the city is proposing to build a shared use path on Union Street. So this is Route four, Brett's and Herman. So the, um, shared use path will be two blocks from Route four to Herman. Um, currently, there is no safe path for kids in this neighborhood to be able to, uh, bike to school. And there also are no sidewalks on Union itself. Um, on Route four, there is a project that is funded and, um, in design right now. There's going to be a sidewalk from Union South to, um, Highway fifty. And then a shared use path from Union to Chutes, um, that'll connect to the sidewalk to the school. On the other side of the project, um, there is also another funded and in design project to build a shared use path. For one block from Union to Fourth Street. Um, in the future, there is, um, also a plan to go up another shared use path. On the other side of Route four going south and then another shared use path as part of the Friends of McAllister Park plan going to the east. On Union Street. Um, so this project itself will build a, um. A high visibility crosswalk. Forgot to mention that there will be a crosswalk with flashing beacons to cross Route four. Um, as part of this Route four project, um, for more visibility for pedestrians across. Um, but they're going to build a shared use path, uh, rebuild the driveways, uh, add curb and gutter and storm sewer. Because there's currently a ditch there for drainage and then connect to the shared use path over here. Um, yeah, and I think Jeff can speak more about the projects that are currently in design right now.
Yeah, and I think one other thing we haven't mentioned and we actually got to show on here is there's actually going to be a pass. So the four and fifty, I know that project, we're all waiting for it. Um, still working with funding through I dot to get all that. But when those intersections improvements are done at four and fifty. Um, the plan is to also build a, um, shared use path on the east side. So that's why this will just be sidewalk here on the west. But then there will be shared use path from McAllister up to Union. So you have the crossings here. Um, Herman Street, that's going to be all the way from, from the highway here, all the way down to McAllister. That's going to be, um, resurfaced. And with ADA, um, curb ramps all being updated, uh, that should be in twenty twenty seven. So about a year from now, that will go to bid. And, and then Herman Street will be repaved up and down the whole block. And as part of that, this was made a, a shared use path as part of that project. Um, once again, part of that, um, Friends of McAllister plan. So that's why this, this particular spot is a shared use path. The rest of it will be, um, sidewalk. Um, or just kind of fixing gaps and sidewalks along Herman Street. But yeah, Lena kind of touched on it. So eventually it'll kind of. Hell, a couple more blocks to the east and then eventually tied back down to McAllister. So really, this is kind of a missing link. And, and I know Lena touched on how there is currently no sidewalk on this. So not only is this going to be, um, you know. A ten foot wide path compared to just a five foot to be a bike accessible. So you can get on your bike and go all the way to the school. Um, it also adds curb and gutter to the street. It adds storm sewer. Um, so this is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Um, the project itself will be more than that, but the plan is, um. So next year for NEPRD, the Metro East Parks and Rec, you can always, um, request money through that. So both St. Clair, Madison Counties. Um, are able to, any municipality in there can apply to, to get money through NEPRD. And so I think that was already talked about how we're, um, making this the shared use path, so the sidewalk. So next year, apply for some funding for that. Then the following year, if this is awarded, um, with the Safe House School, we would try to go and get additional, like one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand for that. So overall, this project, um, you know, with the new curb and gutter, the new storm sewer, the tenth of that. Um, the city might still have fifty thousand or a little more than that, maybe still to be determined, but you can still potentially get. Up to, you know, four hundred thousand or more of grants funded through those two different grants, through NEPRD and the Safe Grounds to School. And we have done surveys and Lena can talk about a little more on that, but this is what we say, a hundred and fifty responses.
From Karen, we've done a hundred and fifty surveys, um, to help with this grant application and, um, letters of support. We've got over fifteen from different businesses and local organizations supporting this project.
So yeah, so the community is behind it so far. We reached out. This screening is due here before we can.
Yeah.
Next one's a, yeah, so, so it's coming up here soon. Um, but yeah, just kind of presented to, uh, publicly here, um, to the council and to the public. Uh, yeah, just let them know what's kind of going on.
So it's concrete?
Uh, yeah, I think we're doing concrete with this or is it asphalt? So we are, okay, so we're showing asphalt. We are doing this section. I think it's going to be concrete. Um, this is asphalt here. Um, it's something we could do. It's a little more expensive. And that could, that's an easy enough change if we wanted to make that concrete. Um, so a lot of our paths we do asphalt with it, just a little cheaper. I know for, I'm not a huge runner, but people that are like asphalt. Um, bikers, as long as you don't tool the joints, you sock of the joints, it's usually okay. If you tool it, it's good. You're going to feel a little bumps on bikes. Um, so a lot of the feedback we usually hear is people like asphalt, um, but it could go either way. Yeah.
Good job.
This way you're twenty eight, twenty nine.
Yes, yeah. Twenty twenty nine probably for the, for the actual construction of it, correct?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into committee business. Cemetery committee. Anything to report? Must be Paul.
What's that?
No, Amber.
Amber is Amber.
Cemetery. I have nothing.
Okay, and you're next to.
Uh, there's an ordinance that needs to be reviewed. Review. Oh, is that cemetery?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance. Uh, we have a resolution to review and make a recommendation on the Safe Grounds to School project. This is the Route four project, I believe.
No.
This is the.
This is the one I just did.
Okay. I didn't print everything out. Okay, this is the project for, um.
Give me a.
Union.
Union Street.
This is a resolution to enable us to move forward with the application.
This is, yeah. Thank you.
This is the resolution to move forward with the application. All it is. Is this okay to move forward for a vote next week? Any changes or recommendations? All right, thank you. There's a ordinance review. Uh, progressive weed growth as a nuisance.
What's the, uh, what's the current, Cody, what's the current plan on that?
Uh, I'd say the same agent.
The I say the same.
Yeah. It's just clarifying, uh, the lawyer and I talked about it. We're just clarifying and making it more clear. It was kind of like our cemetery ordinance. It was very vague. It didn't really give much direction. So, so, uh, attorney, I've been working through. It's hard to make sure that we don't run into another cemetery issue where people are not understanding the ordinance. They want to make it clear and concise so that everybody understands what we're trying to accomplish.
Is, is the fee still the same in my life? It's like you guys.
Yeah, so no changes on that. It's just, um, there was a section that was kind of assumed. That you would take care of parts of your property. It's just helping us to abate, uh, tall weeds and backyards, everything like that.
Like on the other side of the.
Well, yeah, on your property up to the edges, it just kind of clears it out a little bit more. We've had some issues where we've had, um, letters written. And, uh, rightfully so, they come in, they talk about it, they petition it, and then. When they tell you they're half of the story and then you look at the ordinance, it's so vague, you can't really hold someone's feet to the fire per se. So we're just trying to make it clear and concise. That way, uh, the letters can be executed.
Thank you. That's good. But that's an amendment to section, uh, twenty four to sixty one of the city ordinances. Is that okay to move forward? Do I have a consensus?
Just a quick, quick question on, uh, some of these properties here, uh, the city, I think they have, what, uh, ten feet?
We have varying, but mostly ten foot, uh, railways.
Okay, um, like the property that was sitting in front of, uh, the school, the high school down there. We grew up, those responsibilities that the city holds ten.
Once it's overgrown and reaches regular, that's what we're doing. Now, the old ordinance said we would just go in and. Take care of it, clean it up, and then charge the homeowner. Uh, there is a due process that is a legal due process. So we are matching that ordinance to follow it. Um, a lot of your overgrowth comes from the person does not take care of that property and it grows out into that area. So we would maintain our area back to your easement line. You get a letter stating, uh, your property has to be maintained, this, that, and the other. Uh, please maintain your property and then that's your kind of a courtesy. And then if it continues, that's where you can start to get built.
Uh, but going back to my question, uh, if it's ten feet and the city has that, who's responsible?
We own it. Yeah, if we own the ten feet, it's our property. We would maintain our property.
Okay, who owns the, uh, bill? I was asking yours.
It hasn't completely shifted over to us yet, but we did know a little bit of it. And then I was waiting because I talked to these, uh, engineer. In St. Clair County and they have, I guess, one more small process to go through because of the I dot paperwork. Uh, so. We kind of jumped the gun and cut a little bit already, but. We were cutting it already, so. So just one half dozen. Any questions?
Technically something to have that on the. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda. Uh, review the ordinance and the finding of facts for the special use permit at Silvyn Vista Drive. That's for the, uh, small group home. And this is the resolution that will. We have, that's, this is a statement of facts. We have to have a resolution for a statement of fact. And then, uh, we'll do the actual, uh, special use permit as a separate action. So.
So.
Go ahead.
Um, okay, so this here is what is going to be on like the special use. Like their permit, like these are the things that you have to abide by.
These are the findings of fact. For example, uh, the application was submitted. They referred the matters of the planning commission. These are the facts.
Right.
That's all this is. The resolution, the actual ordinance for the special use permit is the next item we'll look at. Okay, these are the statements of fact, the facts. If the applicant can legally make the application. It was presented in the plan commission, plan commission made a recommendation, et cetera. That's in the resolution, that resolution.
Okay.
The next, is that okay to move forward next week?
I said no. You got the lawyer saying. You got the lawyer saying straight to all of us here that we can vote eight, zero, we don't want it. And it don't matter what the hell we want. They can still go do whatever the heck they want to do anyways. The one group home that's already there. You can hate me all you want. I don't care. Come find me on the one with the American flag, six, two, one, North Monroe. I ain't got a big black dog no more, but trust me, come find me. Anyways, with that being said, we're wasting all our time talking about the Silvyn Vista Drive, this and that and that. Again, we could all vote it down eight, zero. They're still going to come. They're still going to do what they want.
Well, so George, what I have a question on here. So I'm looking at the, the ordinance, uh, granting a special use permit to. The, this one here, right? Okay, so is this where we can talk about different things that we can put in that, uh, special use permit?
Yes.
Okay, so. Where we had, were at that meeting, they had talked about, um, possibly doing a yearly, um. Like where they have to come in and, uh, apply yearly for that special use permit. I know that that's something that we probably have to change though. For all the special use permits to make it, to make it, um. You know, across the board, right? But is that, is that something that we can, can do? Is that something that we still want to possibly do so that we can review them every year? Because if we have issues like we do with the one now, we can say, okay, well, you have violated. So we're not, no longer using issue this special use program.
They put, I mean, in the past, the city council has put fine movements and conditions on special use for this. For example, one we got was just a few weeks ago on the, uh, property on, uh, West Street is that. Absolutely, this, that's all of this, this is down here, so.
The other home?
Yeah, no, it's not the other home. It is, it was on farming. They want permits for.
Herman's, sorry.
Herman did. We put special, we put additional conditions on that special use permit. That's why they had to come back and redo it.
Got you, got you. So we don't have to, we don't have to do that across the board for special use permits, right? Okay, so we can, we can possibly put that, that they need to yearly, uh, request a yearly special use permit for this so that we can. I mean, just, just so, I feel like we have. Somewhere to stand on. Somewhere to stand on the fact if. We continue to have, it's like we're having issues with the other place. We have some type of ground to. Hold them accountable for. But we can't, we can't hold them accountable because the lawyer straight up said, we cannot hold the handicapped individual accountable compared to, I'll say it, a normal individual. He straight said it, or that you can't hold him accountable, the one home that's operating over there, they don't have no special use permit. But we've been looking the other way since Jurassic Park roamed the damn earth. But it's the truth. Truth hurts. I think we're wasting our time, us talking about this one million times, by all means, we could talk about it, but we're gonna get nowhere. But that's the, that's the problem too, like where, where are we at with that, like how, why are we? What do we need to do to make them come to the table and, and? Steven Spielberg, now probably knows more about the director of Jurassic Park, knows more about that place than we do. So anyways, that's, that was one of my concerns on that, um, and then from my understanding too, that, that other, that other place, I didn't know if this is maybe something we can put in the. Miss permit or whatever it is. Apparently there's, um, members of. The, uh, staff's family, boyfriend, whatever, staying the night, hanging out there, all that kind of stuff. Putting some type of ordinance, or not ordinance, but, um. Some type of vocabulary here in, in the, um. And especially use permit. Um, on, you know, only the, um, patients and the. Um, can have visitors, but not, obviously not, not even probably because they're. Well, I'm, I'm sure, but I mean, they're running as, they're running as a hospital.
The organization already has those stipulations in there, they're just breaking.
I know, but I'm just saying though, that so that if we can then have something to stand on. Instead of us kind of. Not doing anything what we're doing now, I mean, we don't, we're not doing anything now with the other one, I mean, but we need to, we need to start somewhere, we need to have. Something so we can hold our ground so that we can't just have these people walk all over. Unfortunately, we can't, we can't touch the. ADA handicapped individuals at that place. We cannot touch them.
We can't do anything different.
I'm, that's, and that's.
You can, but then you get sued. So that's why we have a lawyer. Be dead before they get the money.
But if your house gets broken, you can go after the people that run the place, civil.
Right, I'll shoot them.
I don't know how that would shake out of something.
Uh, if a person breaks into your. The resident. Those facilities break into your home. You can file civil. And if they break criminal law, they can get that filed as well. Because as long as the disability is, as long as the action is not related to the disability. Unfortunately.
Most likely it will be.
Unfortunately for us. I dealt with this as a school administrator. Uh, when I had a student come into my office, I had to check real fast, a little box. On my computer screen telling me whether that student was a special needs student. And therefore, I had to handle that disciplinary perceived process. Different, mastered from the regular population. Didn't mean I couldn't, uh, initiate something. They did, and they're, they're, they were entitled to, uh, in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension, that can be done. But it has to be done with a different process. We had to write up a whole new, uh, plan for them. It'll be that. Different story. The same thing here, when these residents do things and I have a city. We can hold the company accountable.
It's not the president, no.
They're not being supervised.
So we should absolutely be able to hold.
You should, but we can't. It won't happen.
If, if your eight-year-old came over to my house.
It's an eight-year-old, though.
Listen to me.
I know, but we're talking about age.
No, listen to me. If your eight-year-old came over to my house and damaged my property.
I would have to pay for that.
I am, would you be okay with the police coming arresting your eight-year-old and putting your eight-year-old in jail with a whole bunch of adults? Absolutely not.
They weren't able to do that, and it's, it's not how it works in the first place.
Have the mentality of a seven-year or eight-year-old.
Right, which makes it even more dangerous because my four-year-old, eight-year-old, whatever.
Can't help that. They can't, they were born that way, right?
Right.
They could have been in an accident, which is very unfortunate, I. I'm, I totally am with you on all of that, I'm very sympathetic with that. But I'm also sympathetic on our residents that are living in these neighborhoods, and I feel like we need to have.
Me that there's something that needs to be done, but we are not gonna punish. The, the eight-year-old. The, the, the adult that has the mind of a child. We should go after the people that are in charge of them.
Well, that's what I said.
Yes. I don't.
Maybe go in the company, I think, get them.
We're not gonna put them in jail, that's just silly.
Well, I mean, if they break the wall, break the wall, and jail.
You don't put an eight-year-old in jail.
They're not eight, they're not eight.
No, they're not eight-year-old, but their mind is an eight-year-old.
We don't know that, though, we're not, we're not doctors or we're not.
That's the reason why they're there. Because they're not adults.
A, a mental institution, if, if it's that, if it's to that degree, and that, then they should be. I mean, in my opinion, RJ.
I've dealt with this issue.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, it's RJ though.
RJ, excuse me, RJ, I've dealt with this issue as an educator for over fifty years.
That's great, I'm not worried about the school, I'm worried about the residents of Lebanon, and the people living in that neighborhood, that's what I'm worried about.
Please listen to me, it's the same issue, and we had the same problems in the school. When I sat in that superintendent's chair or principal's chair, I had the same problems. And I had just had to deal with it a different way, and that's what we're looking at, is we have to deal with it a different way.
My point exactly, that's why I'm asking to see if there's other things that we can put in the special use permit. To help our case if things arise.
Contact Luke tomorrow.
Well, I thought that's what we were doing tonight, was discussing stuff.
Discussing, but, but if you have something, contact Luke. And you've got to be very specific as to what your concern is. And ask him if there's language you can put in there, if there is, then next week's, week's meeting, when this comes up. Even though it's a recommendation from committee. Cause I know the majority of us, I think, read them before to get it out. It's a recommendation from committee, we can at that time make an amendment to the recommendation.
Okay. Right, but the reason why I'm bringing it up is so that we all can possibly. Cause I don't know lawyer language, and there's a lot of harder people here than I am, so that's why I'm bringing these issues up to hopefully maybe we could. Talk about, yeah, that's maybe a good idea, how, but we can go maybe this way.
RJ, I agree with you completely. But. We need to have some language to work.
Right. Absolutely, and that's what the worst.
We're not gonna invent the language because we don't have the attorney here. That to guide us, that's why call the attorney. And I know Paul will talk to you, Paul, Luke will talk to you. Got too many names changing, right? Luke will talk to you, and, uh, uh. You could probably come together with some kind of language for the specific concern. And then we can put it in next week as a amendment to the, uh, to amendment to the ordinance.
I'm not, I feel like you guys are thinking like I'm getting upset with you guys right now, I'm just trying to like. Talk about this issue because it's a very large issue, and a lot of people are very upset about it, and I get that we can't really do anything about it, but. The little things that we can maybe possibly do, I think we should talk about it.
We can do, what we can do, or the, what we can really address are the things the company is responsible for. And there's supervision. And that they will not have non-company, uh. Res, uh, uh, non, non-employees. Spending the night in their, in the house, so, and we can say that.
So we can say that, we can put that in.
We can say, you have to follow the rules, and if the rules say that non-employees. Cannot, cannot stay overnight, then that is part of, that's part of what we're looking for.
I mean, cause I would, but, I mean, thinking about it as like if it's an eight-year-old, right, and there's another man in there, and, and this person, a girl who's. Has a mind of an eight-year-old, and, you know. Gets taken advantage of or whatever possibly could happen, I mean, it really puts these people in a dangerous spot, so that's why I feel like.
But we have to be careful.
We need to like, right, we need to take care of them because we're gonna be coming, and also we need to take care of our residents, and that's why I feel like we need to.
We, we have to be careful. That we don't put up, don't put something in our ordinance. That somehow could come back at the city, cause it makes it appear the city is already. Seeing this problem, and this is a blowback to the city and becomes our problem again. We have to be careful.
Yeah, definitely agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, ready to move on to the next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is a, an ordinance. For the special use permit for Silvam Vista, we did that one, didn't we? I'm pulling them off the, off the, I see what we did here, alright. So that's all the ordinance committee has to bring forward. Anybody have anything else for ordinance? Hey. Public property.
Nothing to add, no.
Nothing to add, no. How about the trees and the?
Well, I did talk to Cody, actually this morning, so, uh, we got a report on it. I'll talk with him further, then we'll have to propose. Where you get the money for it, I guess. Who can do it, right?
We are going to. Get all the money, uh, the prices together for what it's gonna cost for that section over there. And, uh, we're going to look into the business district, because it is uptown. There's a section of brick. That, um, has always been maintained by the property owner, and we did some discussion on it back and forth, I was also talking with a couple of concrete contractors. And decided to do a concrete roll stamp with color dye. To alleviate grass coming back up and through, and have your expansion joints put in, meaning the old concrete. And while we are already in that area working and putting that section back to good use. There's also a section sidewalk that's in front of Ron's, it runs kind of down the sidewalk in that area, and has a, a long shoe crack lateral, however you wanna look at it. Uh, whichever you're looking at it, fixing that uptown sidewalk. So that it's more presentable to the uptown public and is a tripping hazard at the moment, so, yes, sir.
This is right.
Right over here, where these trees were, um, we talked to an arborist, it was actually. Interesting how three trees had died, quick with a finger. We have suspicions, we can't say it wasn't hurt, can't say it wasn't. But the fact that three died ran away, so. Um. It all ties together with the guard club, Sharon's been helping me out, I've been getting a lot of outside work from, uh, outside works from other people to get color brought back to the downtown district.
Is, so, oh, I'm sorry, George, go ahead, but.
Cody, could you take, see on some of these things in the business district that we could use business district? Funds because we do have that tax fund sitting there, and it doesn't have to be the building owner. Uh, we can use it at request.
Okay, yeah.
Save us using other.
Yep, absolutely, we're gonna try and, uh, use all avenues to make sure that we're not using your own money if we don't have to.
So you'll, um, that sidewalk or whatever, that's all getting kind of torn up or whatever and replaced with like stamped brick or?
Is, yes.
So, second question, so is there any of our like light posts or any of that wiring, would that maybe be time where we can run maybe conduit or anything like that?
Yes.
To where we could then get those lights?
Correct, so we are going to make sure, like, we're gonna put that conduit in regardless, right, so once we forward, it's gonna, it gets new conduit. Um, if anybody's noticed, and they're in front of the mini park, we did the, down there, that was actually the street department, uh, that had poured that. We ran new conduit, we actually got maps, we know where our wiring is now instead of just tucked wherever, whenever, um, I get that, and it was a handshake deal, but. We have to follow ordinance too, right, so we're saying we, we should, we can't slap other people in hands, and then, cause they say how they do, so. Yes, new conduits going in, electric boxes are going in, uh. Proper wiring's going in, so.
Awesome.
That'll all be taken care of, now it'll stop with that new concrete.
Right.
Simply because we don't know what the future's holding right now for any uptown grants, so I don't wanna run all this power and then we change it to where the poles are gonna have it, we need a bigger conduit. And everything we put in, we have to tear it out, so we are cognitive of how far we're gonna go and see it, see what we're gonna install.
Thank.
Thank you, good question.
Thanks. Um. Streets and alleys.
You got Cody, been talking about the MS four stormwater.
Let me get quick and painful tonight for everybody, uh. I made a, uh, printout, it has to have a little color to it, just to, uh, give you the idea of some of the stuff, cause you wanna see the rains to drain. Uh, it's gonna be a little sheet, Saint Clair County, one of them's gonna say residential stormwater guide, one of them's going to be a pamphlet, if you fold these, a stormwater guide for kids. We also keep pamphlets up here at City Hall, I need to restop them, let's take her down to our last one. But the idea of tonight is to make people recognize that there is some issues in town that we run into that people might not see on a daily basis. Um, some of the big things that MS four is trying to capture at this time, and it might sound silly now, but it kind of makes sense a little bit later. You wash your car in your driveway, you don't think much about it, goes down the storm drain, not a big deal, right? Well, then you got the guy down the road that his truck leaks oil, has all these issues, he washes it. Now we have water that has oil and deposits in it that goes down the stream, that water eventually at some point makes it back, probably where, right? Our water comes into our systems and comes back into your drinking water system, granted they're purified, but the idea behind MS four is to. Keep the oil deposits and chemicals from going down in these drains and eventually killing your fish population or anything like that, uh. Uh, again, these are very, uh. Well-spelled out pamphlets, it just kind of talks about disposal of oils, so, um. As all other persons, it is your duty to also watch out for, if you see someone dumping down a storm drain, that has to be reported. That's not a, oh, okay, well, Jim's done it before, no big deal, um. That makes problems for my system, that makes problems that they're going to put in, I don't know if they're going to, but maybe they could, what if it goes into our sanitary system too, right, so she has to treat that water. Every gallon costs how much to treat, roughly? More than we want to for dumping extra material down the line, right, so we wanna make sure people aren't dumping anything down there. As you'll see around the city, we're starting to stencil everything that's part of the MS four requirement that says rains to drains. I'm sure everybody saw that pamphlet before, but it's basically the fish, uh, stamp on the back of the catch basins, it is a mandated requirement, so. We're going through and making sure that we have all of that, uh, again, right, so just hit some of the areas. Washing commercial vehicles, storing and exposing, uh, storing the disposable chemicals, you. Call someone, if you can't get ahold of somebody to dispose of oils, there's like, uh, Walmarts are the places you can take your oil to, there's always options, never dump it on the ground, uh. Sweeping.
What's that?
Paints, paints is a big one, for some reason, I don't know why they don't like storm, storm drains as much, but seems like they dump paints in sewers pretty regularly. Uh, again, right, so if you see it, say something, we wanna keep everything nice, uh. Sweeping parking lots and that, we sweep, we run a sweeper Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh, not every Tuesday, every Thursday, so we haven't necessarily posted that, but, uh, we try to run a sweeper every Tuesday, Thursday to keep stuff cleaned up, picked up trash. And that's why that's getting all off, cause there's some kind of trash and debris in. Um, covering runoff materials, so something that we're looking at and waste management is working with us also. Is, we would like to bring back. At least I would like to bring back, and this is gonna be new to you, you're gonna find this out now, is we'd like to bring back roll-offs, then they come in. And have one big cleanup year, I know they have our John to pick up. But it seems to have a lot better, uh, effect if we pick a Saturday. Um, I don't mind coming in on Saturday, let's get some roll-offs, let's pick up tires, let's get anything in the, uh, ditches lines, dish lines cleaned out, kind of a community involvement, uh. I'd up does a similar thing, you go out and you have them pick trash up inside the road, you leave a bag and we'll come pick it up, so. Uh, the goal is kind of start cleaning the city up and getting it nice and making it to where people want to move into our city. So if you have any materials like that, I know it sounds silly, but if you have used tires, they're supposed to actually be covered. So the runoff for those tires, that's called coke or coke ash, it's the dye that's in a tire, it's very toxic. So I'm not for sure why it's less toxic when it's on your car outside, but you're supposed to cover them when they're not in your car. So make sure we're doing that, uh, and then using water for cleaning exterior areas, make sure when you're cleaning your houses, your driveways, whatever you're doing. Uh, try and find an eco-friendly soap, I know it's. Little more expensive, takes a little more money out of your pocket. But, uh, if everyone washed their vehicle with simple green and it went down the drain, we'd be in a real, real bad issue here with Little Silver Creek and Silver Creek so close. Any questions on the pamphlets? So if you see anything like that, a big thing in the Knowles, Ron's helped us out a lot, see a concrete truck dumping down the catch basin, call me. I'd love to talk to Chad or whoever's out there, anybody. So, uh, it's illegal, really illegal, so.
Thank you, Cody.
Thanks, George, appreciate your time.
Um.
Don't go nowhere.
I, I gave my favor.
So, uh. Sidewalk reimbursement program ordinance. We have proposed ordinance, the sidewalk reimbursement program. And we need to move this on to Scott City Council next week, if there's nobody objects to any, all of any of it.
I had your uh commentary down earlier. I'm gonna double clarify. The only question we did have on is I'm gonna get answered. If anyone didn't have an answer. I'm gonna clarify to make sure that you can still pour it as a homeowner. I think that's something that I had looked over when we were talking to Fluke. We uh Stephanie and I met last Wednesday in Blue, which was all of us had a very productive meeting about city ordinances. And the uh as Mr. Velpi likes to refer to it in this Jurassic Age ordinances. So we're gonna try and bring those at least to the nineteenth century. Maybe twentieth, if we're lucky, get them rolling.
Thank you. This is a amendment to the ordinance that exists. This okay to move forward?
Yes, yes.
Hey, move that forward. And then the ordinance for the approval of city bank accounts. Uh approval of city bank branches, bank to move funds with the Bank of Springfield and establishing policies. Any questions about that ordinance? And we'll move that forward as uh recommended by committee. The final thing. You may ask the mayor to kick it, jump in on this one a little bit. The city hall was inspected. And last week, we all received, recorded that inspections. And apparently it's gonna cost us almost as much to build a new city hall as it is fix this one up. So I'm open to how do you want to approach this issue? What do you want to talk about?
I would, it's it's been. Again, back in the Jurassic Park era of this building is not structurally sound. You got tar on top of plywood, on top of tar, on top of cinder blocks, on top of the roof, waiting to come through and hit you, knock you out, send you in a coma. Then it'll take me a star twenty-five minutes to get from right there to here to kick your butt to the hospital. Could jump on a velociraptor to get there quicker than that. Our base been underneath here. We could all fall through there at any given time. The the carpet here has been here probably longer than you've been alive, George. It it's terrible. It's embarrassing. I don't think citizens should be up here. I don't think the workers should be up here. I don't think any of us should be up here. Where do we go? I have no clue, but when is enough gonna be enough? We've kind of just pushed it and pushed it and pushed it since uh God knows when. Hold on, George. We're not talking about school yet again. But again, it's it's terrible here. It's a state inspector. If I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, I think he's one of those guys that's one out of six out of the whole doggone state. So it's not like Blake inspected this building and just said, well, this looks like crap and that looks like crap too. I don't even know if I saw in there. If we even had a mold test or asbestos test that was in there for the air quality in here, which ain't good, let's be real. We're better off just knocking this building down, not spending one point five million dollars to try to fix this dilapidated, you know what? When's enough gonna be enough or are we just gonna push this and push this and push this till, I don't know, my grandkids come up here? I guess that's my next question and I wanted to get chief involved because he kind of knew the inspector a little bit. He could kind of elaborate more on.
You still back here, chief?
Yes, he is, yes. I wouldn't be saying that if he went right behind you there. I'm not like George talking about school back in the, you know, sixteen hundreds. Chief, if you wanted to elaborate, I know you were kind of.
So you know how I how I got involved? My concern had nothing to do with what the building looked like, what was wrong with it, nothing else. Mine over a year ago, people were coming to me about safety here, that you're safe, my safe, y'all safe. Okay, so that was my angle of uh how I kind of got involved. And as I was talking to employees, as I was talking to citizens. A lot of the safety issues, I'm strictly say, I'm not talking health and safety issues. I'm talking somebody doing something bad. Okay? That a lot of those issues, about ninety-five percent of those issues, can be resolved by changing the building. Okay, so I had no idea where this was gonna go when I started asking questions and I went to the mayor. And we had that conversation, said I want to have somebody inspect the boat. So I said I can take care of it. So that's how I got involved. So when you're asking why the chief of police doing this, that's what, that's how I. So I contacted the state inspector. And he came, he went through the building, went through its entirety. He was here several times. He spent a lot more time here than he ever anticipated. Uh after that had taken place, uh I met with mayor. Uh city attorney Jessica, and we discussed his initial report. So so you have a timeline how this one. And discussing that initial report, so just the initial report was bad. A lot of health and safety issues, a lot of, a lot of problems with the boat. Okay, so he had to still do, I think it was the sewer and some other things. And during our meeting, I asked the mayor, I said, do you want me to go to contractors? And get some approximate cost, not hard cost, just approximate. So I could do a summary and give it to you guys, because all I'm doing is giving you the information. It's on you to vote whatever you feel. Okay, so I did. And I had them come through. Once I had the final report, I went to them. Not mentioning their names because I didn't want to be mentioned, doing me a solid. And you're looking at just out of the, I think it's thirty-four. Issues with the boat. Not all were critical. Okay, but there's, I think it was like thirty-four issues. You guys had it. And then one report, you're gonna have a summary. And then the separate report, the final report, they have pictures that will actually point you to where the inspector's talking about. Okay, my wife nickname was me wreck it route. I can't even change the oil on a lawn mower, right? So that's good for me to have this, right? So as you go through that report, it's, he's explaining what's wrong with it, whatever we're talking about. And then there's pictures so you can see, okay? So this building shot and there's just no way to put. Is is that the words that uh the inspector used? Yeah. Is that the words that the people who I had come and looking um the building, give me approximate cost or I spoke to? Absolutely. They said, so just on six, as an example, just I did a summary. And it was a brief summary to give to the mayor. And just on six of the topics, going over the exterior and the foundation.
Well, those are six major issues, right, chief?
Yes, yes, sir. Uh major from the standpoint that doesn't address mold, doesn't mess the uh address the air quality of from the mold, because apparently, not that I need you to dumb this, I spoke to you on my business. But apparently, September of two thousand twenty-three, we got an estimate because we knew we had a root bad. Nothing was ever done with it. So how much snow and ice and everything went down the walls of the building? From September of twenty-three, so now we're in, you know, October twenty-five. So if it was already bad in September of twenty-three, how much more damage has been caused today? Okay, I don't have that answer. I'm just, I'm just giving you guys the information, so don't shoot the mess. So out of those, those points of uh just the backside of the building, the exterior, like I said, and foundation. Uh the electric uh was really bad, uh the roof shot. Now, back in nine of twenty-three, that estimate for the roof was over ninety-eight thousand. That was back in one September twenty-three. Well, what's the damage underneath the top layer? I had no clue. Not construction man, but there's gotta be more damage, right? Okay, so out of those figures, if you just tally up those figures, oh, and plumbing, that's a factor. Uh including the plumbing that's in the, I'm gonna call it Southport where the ambulance is, that's what I'm gonna call. Okay, that area there, that drainage is tied in, I guess to, pardon me, correct me if I'm wrong, the plumbing or the the sewer. And it's not supposed to be, according to the inspector. Floor drain, floor drain. So that has to be, that's completely separate system, should be a completely separate system than the sewer. I'm not sure if I had that right, but anyway, something was bad with that. So you're looking at just minimum cost, minimum cost. Uh and and everybody said this to me, that once you start one thing, it's going to lead into another. If you go back there and look at the back wall, the back wall looks like fall down any day. The electricity that's attached to the building is slumped over. That can be fallen down. And according to the state inspector, the sewer is draining underneath the the road, the alley. Stop out of a health issue, is it? So anyway, just, and these are hard costs. They're not hard cause, these are approximate cause. You're looking at just for those things I said, six out of thirty-four. They told me you can guarantee you about five hundred and thirty-five thousand starting. And you're could be looking at up to seven hundred and twenty thousand. And that's if nothing else is wrong as a move off. That doesn't address the flooring back here. That the wood's bad, you could fall through it. So that's what I was told. That's what I'm telling you. And. I'll answer any questions if you have one.
So when this was presented to me and brought to me, I want to share some information with you guys. Most of you know, my husband and I, we have several commercial buildings. He's a contractor. Like we know, I'm not gonna claim to be expert by any means, but we know some ins and outs of construction. One of the things that none of this report is considering is that if a business came in town, we would say hypothetically, if they bought this building. What we have done to our businesses on the brick street is as soon as they have touched the electrical or the plumbing or anything, that everything has to be ADA compliant. So I will reference grit and tonic, for example. They touched the electrical and plumbing in that building and we came back and said, now you have to make a second bathroom. It's gotta be ADA compliant. We don't have an ADA compliant bathroom here. We don't even have one that technically the public can access without us unlocking and letting them go through our storage area to get to. So this, none of these numbers are including that if we hold ourselves to the same standard that we hold our businesses and our residents to, that I think we should. Is that everything is going to have to be brought up to code because we're literally, there's plumbing issues, electrical issues, there's foundation issues. Uh rafters, floor joists, everything. So there's not an inch of this building that's not gonna be touched. There's asbestos flooring under the carpet. All of that is gonna have to be handled by professionals and hauled off in a certain way. Um same thing with the mold. It's gonna have to be treated and if we're we're the city. We can't have somebody come do it as a side job on Saturday and look the other way. Um also in that, starting in two thousand and twenty-six, if I'm correct. There's a new uh res code coming out. What that means is typically when you get into a new commercial building, you're required to do what's called a res check or res report, something like that. But it's the energy efficiency of a building. Once we would start getting into all of this, and like when I did my building, for example, the main building down there we built. I had some things that I had to adjust because it wasn't found efficient enough. So I had to upgrade the quality of my windows. I had to downgrade stuff. I had to put insulation in other places to make my total red score balance out as well. This building is nowhere near efficient. So like, for example, these are single pane glasses, all of this, all these windows will end up. So everything is gonna get drug in as soon as we start doing anything. And my concern is, I've had a couple of people that have asked me, do we have the money to do a little bit here, a little bit there? What's the plan? I don't know where you start because obviously you start with the roof because it's leaking. Uh pretty actively and you can ask the library. And so if it's leaking, then we start there, but then the foundation has over a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage that we know of. Um, did he inspect the library? Okay, I was gonna say, I know there's a visible place that's bulging in the brick inside the library right now. So the, you can't fix the roof and not fix the foundation and then all of this comes into play with what he's saying. Do we keep our employees in here and what are we actually risking as a city as we take the time to figure all this out? Um so that's my choose. I just wanted to share it from kind of a developer standpoint, because the other thing to consider. If we do decide to go somewhere else. These are all the standards we're gonna ask somebody. So if my husband and I were interested in the building, and we are not. If we were, these are the things that we're gonna require somebody to do. And I am just gonna throw it out there, you're easily looking at one point five, two million dollars minimum to even get this building functioning and safe for the people to be in. That's just my personal thinking.
I'd say it's a pretty good job for not being an expert. It costs more money to renovate than it doesn't tear it down building. And I don't think, I haven't talked to any of you about this before, but I don't think there's anybody in this room that knows that this building is a disaster. And I've lived here twenty-six years and I've heard it's gonna be torn down for twenty-six years and it wouldn't be code. And we expect everybody else to be in code. And um but it always comes down to money. But I wouldn't let my wife work in this place. No, sir. Because I can tell you the mold counts are outrageous and people do get sick. And then if I wouldn't let my wife work here, I certainly don't want you guys working here. So it's a matter of money and figuring out what's next, whether rent a place or tie bean, figure out grants. But I mean, something has to be done for sure, obviously. I I got a question for chief. Is the police department up to code? Probably not.
Now, can I comment on it to pay back?
Yes.
Uh the contractors that I spoke with too, I didn't know, just was gonna say that. They pretty much said the same things, they they, you know, all three of them. I said, I wouldn't give you two hundred thousand to fill.
No.
Because the city's gonna make me, just pretty much exactly what she just said. Get everything up to code and I'm gonna have to spend beaucoup money just to get up to code and the city's gonna make me do it. They said, tear it down, make the apartment.
Yeah, it.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just telling you what.
What I'm saying is that there, I don't know, since I've been here for two weeks, this is my second all the. I do know, but I knew no building. I I've done it for thirty years. Uh the torque building's down, built new ones, renovated one uh in town, rented a couple in town. This one here, Dr. Jess, costs us more to save it than it did to tear it down. But I did it because of historical value in it. But there's no historical value in this building. So you guys have already, I believe, mayor, you've already been working on some ideas, but in my opinion. The police department's not up to code, this is not up to code, and you're gonna have to come up with an idea, which I would think would work well. If you could combine those two, city hall, police department and get a grant for it, but a grant's gonna take some time to get. So there has to be something done in the meantime, because if a grant takes a year to get or two years to get, we're still having people in this building and it's dangerous. So something has to be done, and I don't think we can make that decision tonight anyway.
Oh, no.
That was a good discussion.
Yeah.
My main purpose for the thing, I hate to drop the bombshell on you, but it's the transparency, what it's about. I remember in all the room before, we had some issues in here that Pusha was here, they said some things, but it was on a list. We're gonna take that list and cross things off. But I guess they saw so many issues, they didn't make a list of like a half a dozen or dozen items or something. So when I talked to the chief, my purpose was to get this building looked over, what I said, with a fine tooth comb to find out what was wrong with it. And with what we got, we had an initial thirty-nine page report, then an addendum of fourteen pages. So they're like, what was it, fifty-three, whatever stuff, page report about this this building. And I mean, some issues are worse than the others, but the ones the chief mentioned are gonna cost like half a million to three quarters billion dollars. And personally, I don't think this, we don't want this place to be a money pit. I mean, it should have been, things have been done in the past or something. Like I say, hindsight is twenty twenty, but it was not twenty twenty. It was like twenty fifty or something. Now, now we're gonna try to make it twenty twenty.
You couldn't have even done it then.
Right, no.
Have the asbestos issues, you got the plumbing issues, you got the mold issues. Even if they would have fixed them along the way, we'd still probably be at the same place we are now. So we could show them what it could have to death. Yeah. What are we gonna do within the next sixty days? Are we gonna rent trailers?
No, I've got some ideas already before we go to that. Just the biggest issue is going to be money, because I, this is a good discussion that I've held many times in my school facilities class, where we went out and inspected the school. We inspected the old elementary school down here one night with my class. And they came up soliciting, you gotta tear the thing down and build a new one, which is what we did. But um to stay on track is.
That's very hard with you.
No, it isn't. I'm on track. It's just that I have.
We're talking about an elementary school. We're talking about city hall.
An elementary school.
Trust me, you do not want to slam your fist. You're out of order. You slam your fist at me first, George, trust me.
Understand, doesn't destroy property then.
I'll fix the property. I ain't worried about that.
I mean, these are old desks. You're not gonna find.
I'll fix it. He ain't going to slam his fist at me. Come on, Sean.
Sean, relax.
You relaxed, George.
I am relaxed. I just, I'm trying, I'm getting interrupted on my expertise area.
You both are out of line.
I have an area of expertise and you're saying, oh, this is a city. No. School facilities, school facilities are like, they are public buildings. And we have to build a certain code and that's the same difference here. No, I didn't even want to talk about that. What I was going to say is that we need to look at funding. Now we're going to fund whatever we do. We cannot afford to put a million dollars into this building, because then we have a million dollars into a seventy or eighty year old building. And it hasn't improved the building structure at all. It's just, it's just uh paint and plaster on the outside. We are either going to need to go from scratch and build a new city facility.
That's, I mean.
Which could be, may I finish?
Sure.
Which could be a combination City Hall, Police Department. So that, because we had City Hall Library for decades, now we need a City Hall Police Department. And we could do that. We could, I've been pondering this all week since I read this report. We could build on that parking lot, stay operating here, everybody park someplace else. Instead of having a single floor building, yeah, you had to put in another eighty thousand for an elevator. It could be a two-story facility. And a brand new City Hall in this area, which keeps this area vibrant. When that's finished, this gets leveled, becomes a parking lot. So there's a lot of things we could do. We need to have this, but to do that, we have to begin looking at what are going to be our costs. A new building is going to probably be easily four million to five million dollars. Very frankly, we're not going to build a building for one and a half, two million dollars. Now can I have anything in it? Can I have what we need to operate as a city?
I don't think it'd be that much.
I don't think, three million maybe.
It depends on what you're going to do, Police Department and everything. But that's, again, we're we're all agreeing, that's something that has to be done. And we're all agreed.
I didn't give up the floor yet.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, George.
Sorry. You know, I I I was going out, I was still talking about the building and tearing it down. Or we could purchase, if there's another building in town for sale, that's a sufficient size and a lot newer, we could purchase that and remodel it for a lot less than it would cost to build a new building. So there are two or three options. And I know right now there's a couple of buildings in town that are potentially for sale that could fit to build. I don't know, we'd have to look at them. I have never been in these buildings. So we'd have to look at it. So there are things we can do, but this is, we have to own as a health and safety issue. Under Illinois law. We can issue bonds and levy taxes for health and safety improvements. In other words, we could build a building under health and safety. We just, and we'll also require the legislature. Well, something you got to move on quickly to get it on the docket for next year's legislature. And they can give us permission, I hate to say levy a tax, because there's no way we're going to come up with two hundred, three or four thousand, five hundred thousand dollars, but eleven million to a million and a half without and some funding and some tax dollars. And we can get permission to raise our tax levy for this purpose of building. It is under health and safety. The legislature can do that. Uh we're just going to talk to our representative. So there's, I've been thinking hard on this and everybody's going around. We have to start saying, where do we want to start? Do we want to start with, are we going to try to stay in this building or get rid of it? So vote on that. Then we have to decide, okay, if we're going to move out of this building, are we going to build or buy? Buy and renovate or build. That will tell us then how much funding we need, because we have to know before we go to anybody looking for funds to do something. Be able to find out, uh what are we going to do exactly? That way we'll have, we'll talk to them and tell us. Nobody's going to want to talk to us without knowing how much is it going to cost. How much is it going to cost? Several years ago, we tried to put through a library levy and the city council shot it down. And the libraries finally found the building. Now that they're out of here, we can get rid of the building. So that's my two cents and I could say a lot more, but I'm not going to. But this is an area, again, uh somebody made a comments about, we had an elder person who was an expert on banking and finance, did use his expertise. I taught for twenty years, school facilities. School facilities manager. A school is a public building. So we can say public building management and uh so I could, I could, that was an area of expertise and I wasn't even insulted on this. I could have told you. I wouldn't have done it. We can't do an inspection. But I could have said, we we are better off starting from scratch, building a new building rather than trying to repair this place. If we can all agree on that. Build or buy, rather than repair, we can begin moving forward with some hard fingers. That's my two cents.
That that was part of the, my initial thing was to hit, I gave you guys this final report to look over and then you guys decide on what you think we should do and we'll hesitate it from there. But Paul, you had something to say while we're doing it?
Well, I'm just saying now, is there anybody here that's an older person that doesn't think that this building should be torn down?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it should be torn down, no.
Really?
Needs to be done. I mean, I, it's, has this been the C D O for how long? I think it needs to stay that way. Right? Like that, that's like the one thing, claim to fame, we have, same with like the uh uh what's the house down here? George, what's the house down here? Mermaid's house, thank you.
I think this was a John Deere dealership.
It was John Deere, it was a car dealership.
Right, but it's, but it's been here forever. And it's part of Lebanon's historic. And I, do I think tearing it down? Absolutely not.
But you think you could dump one point five million dollars into just fixing this place?
That's what I have to say. Yeah, I I do. I mean, otherwise.
Where are you going to put one point five, two million into a brainy building?
I'm I'm carrying a speedy, so Andrew.
I just want to say something real quick. So I had this twenty-ten GMC Acadia, I love this thing. We went to Cala like so many times. I practically raised my kids in this vehicle and the engine went out. So I could have spent ten thousand dollars. It's it's a twenty, this is twenty twenty-five, it's a twenty-ten Acadia. I could have spent ten thousand dollars getting a new engine, but wouldn't it 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 wasn't, number one, I could take that ten thousand, get something brand new. I had to get something that was safe for my children, even though I wanted to keep this vehicle so bad. We have so many memories in this vehicle. I mean, birthday parties and you know, Skagoo, where we put up the trunk and sat there with popcorn, watch movie. I wanted to keep this vehicle so bad, just like, I know there are some of us that want to keep this, this building. It's been here for such a long time, but it's missing. That's the bottom line. It's not safe.
Right, but it's, right, but it's a part of the historic downtown, so you probably shouldn't demolish it like they did the building down there, but the John's place. Well, I don't, I'm not sure that John's name, but I mean, it's, and it's, I mean, I understand the the car stuff, I get that, but that's not a historic building, it's a.
To get by, I can't get fixed that unless to get something new. So it it, I mean.
Just saying though, but a car and an historic building are completely.
No, I I get what you're saying, but I'm just.
Yeah.
An example. It's going to cost us more to get this building renovated than it was to get something.
So I was just going to say, if if RJ, you're saying no, so let's just we're not going to go any place from here at this. You're a very reasonable person, so maybe we can sit down and talk about that a little bit, because really, it comes down to the numbers.
Absolutely. And and so I just would be ashamed, I just would be ashamed to yet again, tear down another building in downtown. I get this is a ton of money and we shouldn't be here in the first place, like shame on all the past administrations for not addressing any of the issues that were, you know, uh brought back in, what'd you say, twenty-three, when uh the roof issue and nothing was done and I mean, and there's several other things, like if you go, when you go through the pictures, I mean, you can see like the wiring and so who who did the wiring?
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, we're holding everybody else accountable on their their buildings, but then this building is.
Right, right.
So.
And I can't argue with that, Paul. And if if we were to go to the process of I don't agree with tearing the building down, because I've been studying history of the, and I work at the Thorpe Society a lot. And I know the history of this building, not off the top of my head, but I've read about it, read it a lot. And it is historical because it's more than fifty years old.
Right.
That's the only reason it's historical. It doesn't have any significance, any significant architectural additions to. And that's what, and that's what the uh historical people look at when they're looking at whether or not a building is historical. I'm historical, it's not just how old it is, but what does it add to the historical significance? We could construct, we could build a new structure that is in the most uh older building, so it fits the architecture of the area and doesn't take away from it. And it's going to be safer and will last a lot longer.
And George, I I and I liked your idea too of like keeping it down here though, too. That's a, that's a big, I think that's a big thing. That's why we keep it downtown.
The the properties that are for sale are not down with this area.
Well, yeah.
So that's why we would have to keep it downtown somehow. We have the property already. We just got to figure out how we're going to do it, if that's, if that's what the direction is.
I mean, go ahead, Justin.
I have two things. I'm going to make a comment just from looking at it from a disparate perspective, because Chief told you guys, I saw kind of the initial reports and got, went into this a little earlier, so I've, I've been thinking a lot about it. I understand the historical significance and kind of being, feeling like that ties here. But what I'm looking at and like what I hear, when I walked the streets through COVID and talked to the businesses that were open and talked to all of them about like what they needed to try and survive through COVID and we turned the street to a runway and all that kind of stuff, but talking to the business owners and being a part of that, we need life up here. And City Hall does not drive business necessarily to these buildings. So a perspective that I would, I would encourage you, if the money makes sense to look at this. Look at Highland, look at Mascota, look at O'Fallon, what are they doing in their downtown districts? They've made stages, they've made parking, they've made lights and they've brought life to the downtown to encourage and bring and feed these businesses and feed our community and feed us in tax dollars. So I would look at, if you are, if we do need to take the building down, if that's what we evaluate as best. Don't think of it as like, oh, we're destroying our downtown district. I think we can bring an incredible value, because I would say if we do decide to go somewhere else. The caveat to that is that we pledge that we don't leave this as something that's not going to bring life to downtown. So let's put lights here, let's put a stage here, let's put something here, let's wire it so we can have food trucks, we can have a tent. We can do something to bring festivals and activities and and bring life here and look like we want people to come. Instead of being run down. So kind of just another perspective to look like on that. The other thing I was going to say, we're talking a lot about the building, we're not going to solve any of those problems today. My number one concern tonight here, I am amending the budget. You guys all know that I'm working on it. I'm trying to figure out finances. This is a huge part of that. Right now, several of you have said that if your loved ones were working in this building, that you would not let them and you would not be happy. We need direction on if we need to be finding another place for our staff to go. That right now needs to be your guys' number one priority, because if the city is saying that and doesn't act on it. We're opening ourselves to a lawsuit, because we're saying that we wouldn't let our own loved ones work here and that's who our city employees need to be treated as. So I would shift your conversation to that and then let's work on the building uh over the coming weeks.
What about the fire departments? Is it open to, you guys should be able to use a fire department at all?
I will tell you guys, I reached out to Chief, it has to go through the trust. There was Mary. Uh they mentioned possibly being open to having meetings there, but not having somebody there all the time. Um they also have like their trustees meetings and their fire department meetings and everything, so I did reach out to the fire department to see if you guys decided tonight you want us out of here. I was trying to get some things kind of going. Um it does have to go through the trust and it has to be voted on through them and it was not like a one hundred percent welcome arm, so I it's a possibility. I think it's definitely something to explore, but we cannot use that as offices right away. We need to find something for the offices for sure.
So, so do we have the mold count and all that kind of stuff? Yes, no?
I'm not sure you want it.
Well.
We don't.
Okay, so we need to figure that, I mean, I I most definitely feel like if we move our people out of here, which I think we all should, but if if the mold count isn't, if it's mold that's not dangerous and we move everybody out, and you know what I mean? So I I feel like we, our first step is to figure out what mold we have, get it treated.
Oh, yes. The sewer line that's not running properly and that's pooling in our basement, not okay. The floor joists over here that we had to move file cabinets off of, because it's so weak, we're afraid it's going to fall through. Still not okay. There's a lot of issues, but the molds that I would be concerned with.
He can't microwave food in our office without their lights flickering.
Their lights off.
He took our stove out of operations, because he didn't know if it was their food burning or this wiring. But like, it's pretty bad back there.
Yeah.
Just look at the back wall.
Back wall. I I looked at the pictures. I've never been back there before, but yeah, I looked at the visual map here. What building is that? Yeah.
What might be good for you, maybe bad for me? So you can't just say.
Yeah, I, that's, I didn't say privately. I I I mean, though, like if I know that there are molds out there that don't harm anybody at all, but I also know that there are molds that obviously that can harm some and not, not others. I mean, but yeah, I for no, I don't want, yes, I want everybody to be.
Some things to be remediated, but this building, to remediate everything would have to be torn down, in my opinion. It's just so far, if there's this, I mean, if so we've done renovations and old buildings, there's always remediation. We've done a lot of remediation and tests. But I can tell you that it's everywhere in this building and the the spores are everywhere. Which means you'd have to take everything down and rebuild it. So we're at a point basically where we're just talking about where do we get the funds, right? And how to proceed in such a way that we can build something that's historical looking or I'm just, I'm just saying this is built, this building, if I was an investor in this building, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pay even I'd pay, I'd pay what it would cost for the the property and then you got to tear it down. So you really lose the money when you're doing that. So you have to figure that all in. And the police department, let's face it. That, if we're holding people accountable on their buildings here, why is the city getting away with it and the police department, that's, it's not your fault? We've put you in a building that's not adequate for you. And that's not right. So it's going to cost some money. We've got to figure out where to get it.
But, yes. And from, like you said, where do we go from here? I mean, tomorrow, do these guys report here?
Well, that's the guy, that's the guy who said.
Now that we know that there's um issues of health and everything else, because that's a lawsuit.
Mr. Mayor, what do you do? Well, what do we do?
That's what we're here to discuss.
I know, I mean, but is it, is it, is this mold and stuff bad enough to where we know now that um you know, we send them back to work here tomorrow and is that now liability on us? Because we knew it, I mean, you're an insurance agent, right? So if you knew the tree was bad and it falls on somebody's house, you're now liable. So with the mold's bad, but we don't know if the mold's bad or not. However, we know there's an issue.
We don't really want a reading right now. That's what I'm saying. We do know it's bad. But if you, soon as you get a reading, then you cannot have people in this building.
Right.
Once it reads what it means.
So where could we move our people then?
Well, how many offices do we need? I can't see out here, because I'm blocked. But you know, we we really have to look at. But you know, we, we really have to look at how many, how mu, how many offices and squares that we need. We don't need the council chamber, we have a, a number of places that we can talk to.
Sure.
About holding council meetings, but is the city operations. We need an area for the park, we need an area for the water, water department.
Twelve officials.
Huh?
Twelve officials.
Well.
Cause you, we were brought up here, George, you're number one oh three, it failed, electric failed, we, OSHA brought us here. So it's not like Streets Alley has anywhere to go back to.
Or you're gonna put MedStar too.
Yeah, MedStar, that's another issue, that's, see, so we have to look at where, what do we need? So for temporary, for the, for the time being, the temporary move, which could take place in the next two or three months. What do we need to operate? exclude this area, but what do we need to actually operate? How big offices have, do they have to be?
No.
And where, then their proximity to each other, they really, we can't go to two different buildings. It's gonna have to be a single place, um.
What about the thing process?
The, the, no, the tours of the, the, uh, that's not adequate at all.
George, um, what did they do during like COVID stuff? Do they, are people able to work from home, or some of these?
We did a lot of work from home, we came in here with masks and stuff, but we, we didn't have council meetings. They were all online, we did, we zoomed all those, so those are different, let's not talk about here, but. The working from home could be an option, but we need that kind of expertise, uh. There's the accountability and being able, somebody from the community wanting to see somebody from the city. Where do we say to go? Well, if you want this, you're gonna go over here in First Street, you want this, you're gonna go over in Horner, and you can't, we can't do that. Uh, there are some, there is a building that I know just went on the market, uh, that I see or two. And uh, I'm not gonna, well, actually, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna say the name of the building, normally I wouldn't do this, because. When we were talking about, uh, building a new elementary school, somebody mentioned building a school on a particular piece of property. And the next day, the cost of that property went on ten grand. So, we're not gonna do that. But uh, I, for example, the, the uh, Masonic Lodge is going to go up for sale, because they're moving. They're, they're, they're combining with another lodge, but I think that, I don't think they plan to all keep that building, and that's not a good location for city hall.
It might not be a good location, but it might be temporary.
It could be a temporary city hall, cause they've got a, a big, they got a hall there, they got offices, with small kitchens, stuff like that.
And you could split it up, just even if it is temporary.
Would, would we be able, would that be something that would increase, or is that something that would?
We'd have to talk to the masons and see if they really wanna just sell it, or they're willing to lease it temporarily, that's up to the masons.
I mean, because we probably had to lease it for a couple of years, right?
But, I know there were several people that looked at it today, I wouldn't be surprised, they can't. They can't rent it to us, and you can't ask a business to turn down an offer to rent it temporarily, and I think they had several people looking at it today. That I would suspect that hopefully, like, I would suspect they're gonna have an offer here in the next couple of weeks. I would, I could be wrong, but.
Yeah.
It also, I think, would require some work for us to move into that, that if it wasn't our permanent solution, it's gonna be hard to, um, it.
About the grocery store?
Yeah.
And I have to buy it.
I don't.
Nah, that can go down the war too.
I think it's a good idea too.
It's too much to lease. I, I have looked at, I think it's big enough, I think you can make it work with some, with some things, um. I'm not sure it's worth it where it's listed right now, and he doesn't have a lot of flexibility in the price from what I've kind of felt out from him, um. But it, it's kind of, eh, I think it's something we could explore and kind of say, hey, this is what we're looking at here versus if we build. New or that kind of thing, but as far as a temporary thing, he, he's not gonna work with the city to let us go down there, I think temporarily. Uh, I, if you guys are okay though, like, if, if everybody's in agreeance that the staff needs to be out of here. Then Charlie knows that, that's the direction we need to start looking. You guys know, if you can think of anything, I don't. Like, we don't have contact with persons, property owners and everything, we're not gonna solve that tonight, no for sure. But if you guys think of things, you can let Charlie know, um, I've made some contacts with people. I know one of the things I looked at was, like, the, um. Chambers building, they rent that space out in the bottom, um.
Oh, by Ace?
The visitor center.
Oh, the visitor center.
So they rent some space, they were open to it, but that, you're gonna have to pay them to rent that space. If you're open to a couple employees working from home, like you said, I don't think you can send people all over the place, but I think if you had two or three. Core ones in one place, then you could allow your accountant to work remote, um, I think Blake could go to the P D. Um, and then maybe we could work on some of the communication between P D and code enforcement and dual-purpose that position. So, um, I think there's options if we know that's what, if you guys are all in agreeance, and that's what we need to do, I think we can get headed in that way. And then everybody kind of brainstorm, if you guys think of something, letting us know, I think.
I think, I mean, moving towards that direction, right? And then getting, figure out what kind of mold, kind of stuff that we got here, then if we don't have.
I don't wanna know that, what kind of mold we have here?
Well, I know, but like, if, if, if we can, though, then if, if there is no mold that is harmful to anybody, I, I don't know.
It's all harmful, I could walk into a room, be there for three minutes, and then be hospitalized a week because of mold.
The thing is, even if you mitigate the mold, the building's still not sound enough, so you're still, next step, next, you got that.
Anyway, I, I thought, I, yeah, you're right.
Before, before we begin to wind down here, um, remind you about a couple of things. Number one, discussion about use of real estate, et cetera, is a closed medium item. So if we have any further discussion on a particular property, if you have an idea for a particular property. Please be sure to email the mayor.
Yeah.
So that we can discuss it, but we have to discuss that in closed session.
Yes.
As my example of property, well, we had the committee. Uh, exploring putting in the new elementary school about twenty years ago, twenty-four years ago, twenty-five. Anyway, we had that committee, at one of the meetings of that committee, a member of the committee said, well, why don't we buy this land over here? And put it on the school, and that land was already on the market, and the very next day, the cost of that land went up ten grand. So we don't wanna do things like that. So please, please be careful. We can discuss it in closed session, a specific property, and an idea about the generalization, we could do in an open meeting.
So like doing like Mayor written, like a trailer or something?
Yeah, if you wanna run a trailer, that's fine, but we have to talk, we can talk about that, you know, for example, we could put a couple of double lines out here in parking.
Has to be eighty.
They have to be eighty, fly, double. They can, they're available.
Yeah, I mean, we can have realtor and stuff, right?
You know, there's, there's a lot of things, and they do make eighty, good lines working.
So, okay, yeah.
In the newer part is the office that we have, that sort of, we have one office that would be available for. Being someone, no, obviously, I don't think there's probably a good sign, yeah, if they were, if it's down there, we don't have good internet. Um, so that would have to be upgraded for whatever purpose would be down there, but. I think we could house one or two people, at least in that office, um, temporarily, um.
Yeah, so I mean, are, are, just like Charles, but I mean, are they coming to work here tomorrow, or are we?
Yes, they still are. It's not, it's not.
I know they got a vacation the rest of the week.
It's not an emergency. We also have a building that we can move. We also have a building.
I think we should put a timeframe on this.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
By next, because all of us are getting up to speed on this, right? So it, it has a lot, a lot of moving parts, so we can get with you guys, right, and get a little more information, and then we can. Maybe make a better decision next week.
It's just a homework assignment for everybody.
Yeah, absolutely, and you're the teacher.
You know what's on the agenda for next week, so unless there's any big discussions that go on, there should be a fast meeting on those items. So we could have some more time, more discussion.
Yeah.
Then that's Charlie's meeting.
But seriously, though, if you think of some places, let me know, I'll wait for them, then we could move to ours temporarily.
Yeah, yeah.
Your house, Charlie.
They got this little camper trailer still in your driveway, maybe we can, let's just call people over there.
I mean, for real, like the construction trailer, right, is a real thing to possibly price out.
Maybe Scott has airplane, he can drop, land or.
Okay, is there any other business? We're supposed, yeah, if there are no other business, we're adjourned.